Hi Dana, can you guys hear me on Zoom okay?
I can hear you fine, thank you.
Okay, thank you Dana. And Dana or Tracy or Cisco, any of the council members, I'm testing the public mic to see if you guys can hear okay from this mic.
I can hear you great.
It's great.
Ever been.
Okay, I cranked it all the way to the top, so hopefully we'll be able to hear everybody that speaks. Thank you.
Just checking my sound. Hi Christian, can you hear me Cisco?
Christian, you look so lonely.
Yeah. We're all set mayor whenever you're ready.
Oh, that's right, this is a city council meeting after they've got a new role. Okay, if everybody feels like they're ready, it is seven o'clock and we convene this special meeting of city council. Don't have my agenda in front of me, but of April the 12th, 2022. Roll call please.
Councilmember Loretton.
Yes.
Councilmember Hill. Councilmember Luna Leo.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Green.
Here.
Councilmember Fergency. Councilmember Tharp.
Present.
Mayor Lobby.
Here.
Thank you.
This is a special meeting. Let's, I don't have my agenda in front of me, so sorry. At this time, we don't have any minutes to discuss. Do we have anybody in the public who would like to speak to city council on items not on the agenda?
Believe so much, Hazer and Reese.
Commissioner Budge, please go ahead.
Good evening, everybody. I just wanted to take the opportunity to quickly inform council and let everybody know the VOCC had a work session today and talked a little bit about moving forward with Trust for Public Lands to explore and go through kind of the feasibility with community on perhaps a ballot measure of some sort that would might pertain to recreation, management and other related topics. There's more to iron out there, so much more to come in conversations. And to let you all know, as we work to support the sheriff's office, we are engaging with specialists and professionals in the in law enforcement to give us an assessment and some fill in some gaps on best practices and we have not made any decision yet whether or not to appoint a sheriff. Still waiting on on kind of creating that best plan movement forward through the year. And in regards to that, Justice Center work is moving along. And as although I think as we all try to wait for cards dominoes to fall, they just keep, they don't stop. So I still think I came to you a while ago to request and hope that we can keep in mind and organize some work session on future and collaboration and coordination on Justice Center, law enforcement and other preventative services work between the city and county as far as, you know, what what city's role might be in the Justice Center, both through the process to maybe fill you all in if that is not clear, as well as financial contributions and responsibility. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Is there anybody else who would like to speak to city council? Seeing none, we will move on then. Thank you very much. City Administrator Simonson, would you like to take the floor, please?
Sure, this, we are now at Agenda Item 5A, Resolution Number 12, Series of 2022. A resolution authorizing the purchase of real property known as 809 Spruce Street. And Mayor, if I may, I have a little short staff presentation, keeping in mind that we are we're aiming for about thirty minutes ish for this whole matter, so I want to allow plenty of time for public comment. But if I can just have a few minutes for a staff presentation.
Thank you, please proceed.
Well, thank you all for coming so quickly together. And why are we here and why are we having a special meeting? And the answer is because housing is, we are in dire straits in our community regarding housing. And oftentimes, there's an opportunity to do something about the housing crisis, and that's where we are right now. Is that the city, unlike or like many employers in town, has vacant positions that we have not been able to fill due to lack of housing. We have potentially people who work for the city whose housing is insecure. And we also have a new employee who needs housing. So we are in a place like many employers where housing is a critical, critical issue. And what I had been trying to figure out is how we get through the summer. How do we, there are lots of very, very smart people and very passionate people who are working on housing. But what I realized is that we don't have the ability or didn't have the ability to get housing this summer within six months to get through the summer as a city and to provide the services they're expected of the city. And so it was actually my spouse who told me, you know, there's a five bedroom, five and a half bath house for sale. And I thought, wow, that could be just a great amount of of room for the city. Not too much, not too little. And so that's how we came about this meeting for 809 Spruce Street. And if you look at the third page of the staff report, this property is is has it ticks a lot of the boxes for workforce housing for the city. It's, as I said, five bedrooms, five and a half baths. Each bedroom has its own bathroom. So there is privacy. Each bedroom has its own door. There would be a shared kitchen, which is large. There's a large storage area on the adjacent lot and the rooms are move-in ready. The house looks appears to be very well maintained and it may even come with some of the furniture. The other issue is the home is within walking distance to City Hall. So that's a lot of boxes to tick for workforce housing. This, the intention would be for this house to be used for workforce housing. So think of the days of a rooming house. City employees would be, the idea would be to give city employees some type of priority. And then I provided a potential matrix in the packet where you can see, we can, you know, you can structure this however you want. But the idea would be, you know, city employees full time, then maybe you move down to city employees part time. Then maybe you, if there are no, no one, people who are looking for housing in those categories, you could look at county employees. And then you could even move to people who live in Leadville who don't have or work in Leadville but don't yet have housing. So I think there's enough demand in Leadville to to fill this house. In fact, I think there's plenty of demand. And, you know, if you look at the Housing Action Plan, it really identifies housing and the really providing for civic needs. If you don't have housing, you can't provide for the public. We won't be able to provide the services if we don't have people to do the jobs. And the other issue about this house that I wanted to point out is it's an opportunity to do something where we add housing stock to this, the town. So it is, the bill, the house is currently being used as a bed and breakfast. And so in this case, it's converting vacation rental to housing stock, which hopefully increases the amount of housing available for other people who also live in Leadville. So it's kind of a, it's a nice bonus that we're not taking existing long-term housing stock and converting it to city purposes. We're using, we're taking shorter term accommodations and making them longer term housing stock. So fiscal impacts, I mean, you can see the contract is in the packet. The original asking price was $849,000. We have reached with the seller, they will take $795,000 and the seller will close, cover the closing fees. There would be ongoing costs and I've outlined some of the ones that we have been able to to look at so far. The taxes, I'm sorry, there's a typo in there. It should be, I believe it's, I will look it up. It's not $866.52. I think it's, I will look it up. But at any rate, we have ongoing costs. Staff recommends that the city pay the initial capital investment out of our general fund. The city is in a financial position to do that. The city reserves are at approximately $3.1 million. And our sales tax, which is not the only income to the city, but is a primary driver of the city's income, it has been over projections this year. So far, we are over projections just on sales tax by 265,000, about $266,000. And that is as of March. Other things, our city attorney, Christiana McCormick, has taken a look at the purchase contract and provided legal review and also provided some insight on the zoning for the parcel. We checked with our auditors to find out if there were any issues that they were concerned about. The only thing they noted is that if we do rent the units under market value, that could be considered income potentially to the employee. So I think the bottom line is housing is a critical need. This is an opportunity that has a time sensitive, the house is on the market as of right now, and anyone else could still put an offer in at this point. So we are, staff recommends that the council authorize the city administrator to me to sign the purchase and sale contract at a contract price of $795,000. I've run through that very quickly because I want to make sure that we have time to answer questions, but that, those are some of the highlights.
Thank you Lori. Are there any questions for city council? And I'm going to open it up if there are any public comments on this particular subject, but any, any questions or thoughts for city council? I mean, as a member of city council, I would say we're no different than anybody else in Lake County. Everybody's in dire straits. This is, this is, this housing issue is so acute. My real fear is that if we don't have housing availability, we will not be able to to functionally care for our community the way we're expected to, whether, whether it's City Hall or the street department or police department or fire department. So this is a pretty bold move. I get it. But you know, I feel like Lori is, is, has done the right thing here.
Dana has something to say, Mayor.
Please Dana.
Yes, thank you. I just want to echo that and say I'm in favor of this purchase that and I'm forgetting who said it, but regarding the housing crisis, we cannot build our way out of it. We have to employ a lot of different creative approaches in addition to building to address it. And I think this is one of those, like you said, bold and creative, but necessary additions to our armamentarium of ways to address the crisis.
Thank you. Anybody else in city council before we go to the public?
And Mayor, if I could address that point, Commissioner, Councilmember Green brought up a great point, which I actually for forgot to mention is that, you know, our partners in the community are working on other solutions to housing. This is not the only solution. This is not to say we do this and we're done. The, the housing crisis is something we will work on as a community and continue work on. I had a great conversation with Christie Galarz of the Housing Coalition and we are and of course, there's the work being done by our new housing director along with the Southern Colorado Economic Development Division. This is one tool. It is not the only tool, but it is, it is a very important, I think, first, or it's a very important step.
Thank you Lori. Councilmember Tharp.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Ms. Simonson for the report. I echo the things that have been said already. I support this. I think it's, you know, one of the many tools we have. And I'm really glad to see us taking some steps because that's what gets us there. I would also like to point out that this is an investment that theoretically would pay itself back to the city. So just a little bit of a rough calculation I did. I think in around fifteen to twenty years, we may have made the amount back in rent that we would spend on this. So it not only seems like a responsible thing to do for our employees and, and therefore our citizens, but also seems like a financially responsible thing to do, knowing that that'll come back to us just in, in rent.
Thank you Cisco. Christie, you have your hand up?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Council. I did speak with Lori earlier today and I was really glad to hear that her strategy is this is one way to address the housing situation. I was also really glad to hear that she was recommending this come from the general fund rather than the housing fund, which is the two-way funds that you know, is not very much right now. So I think putting her funding it from the general fund says, you know, like we are still committed to working collaboratively on other housing solutions. And I just want to say that I am speaking from my perspective and not as a representative of the Housing Coalition. They don't weaken, they do not meet until next week. And so I haven't got a chance to talk to all of them about it. But as is usual, we are happy to support you, we being Lake County Builder Generation and myself are happy to support you with research. So I've already reached out to municipality-run workforce housing people and some other corporate workforce housing folks to learn from them what works well, what doesn't work well, what policies and procedures they think are really important. So I would just say, in making your decision tonight, know that you will have support in that if this is the pathway you decide to go down.
Thank you, Christie. Anybody else on Zoom in the public or anybody in general who would like to speak to this issue?
We have a few people here in city at, at council chambers that would like to speak on this matter.
I can't see them. If you would invite them to come up and speak.
They will go up to the microphone now.
Okay.
Hi, this is Kathy Patty. I own the house at 801 Spruce Street, lived there for thirty years. I'm absolutely disappointed and appalled at this, that no notice was given to any of the property owners on our street. Obviously, you guys aren't aware of this. You don't live there. You haven't been through the bed and breakfast arguments and headaches. There is no parking on the street. That house has one spot in the street, on the street and a potential spot in a garage that's very difficult to get into. This has been a historic problem up there. It's nightmare. I've been dealing it with it for as long as we've lived there, twenty-two years. We moved, moved in there when my son, just before my son was born. The fact that no consideration has been given to any impact that this is going to have on the property owners. The fact that no consideration has been given to any impact that this is going to have on the property owners in that area. There is no way five people or ten people, if there's a couple moving in there, where are you going to put these vehicles? What is it going to do? I mean, obviously, this has to go through a conditional use permit. Clearly, because the use is changing, but. I can tell you right now, I have absolutely zero faith that there could be an unbiased determination on a conditional use permit. If the city is spending eight hundred thousand dollars approximately to buy a. Piece of property that is a five and a half bedroom house, a five-bedroom house, five and a half bath. The bathrooms are closets that were turned into bathrooms are very small. There's no storage in the rooms. There's maybe some amwas in there for storage. But there is no storage. So, I mean, it's not like you're renting a room that has a closet and some space to store stuff. I mean, I think there's a lot of information that, I mean, yeah, it looks good, I guess, from your perspective. I understand housing as an issue across. Everywhere. We deal with it every day. I just hired three new people, um, for the department I work in at climax. And yeah, it's. It's an issue, but that doesn't mean if you really are looking after the citizens in this community, you just don't jump in something without fully. Looking at the situation and what the impacts are across the board before you jump into this. You are making the decision in haste without really thinking about it. There's going to be some great opposition to this from all the neighbors in the. In the neighborhood and I signed in for our two neighbors who have sent me a text that I will also read each of their texts. So you can understand our concerns, but the fact that no one was notified and this is just being pushed through without notification of any of the neighbors. To understand what we feel like the impacts might be, I think is appalling. I mean, and I think you guys need to take a step back and you need to look at things before you just jump into something without understanding. What that impact is to the people who already live there. It's significant. And on top of it, there's an easement on the back of that property that that house is in violation of. The deck that's built on the back of that property is blocking the easement. And right now that easement, we're the only house on that block. That is in, is not in violation of the easement. And you can be dang well sure that that, um, deck is coming off if you do this. So now I would like to speak for my neighbors.
Kathy, you, you have, you have three minutes and you have about thirty seconds left.
Well, I've said my point. I think you, you guys need to slow this down. You're jumping into something without. Looking at all the impacts on all the citizens in this community. I have a right, my neighbors have a right to be able to live. We don't know what the noise pollution is going to now become when you have. People permanently living in a house that's not meant for different families. There's going to be a lot more noise on our, in our neighborhood. There's a lot of impacts that have not even been thought of.
Okay, and if you could read the name of your neighbor and read the text.
So the first one I'm going to read is from Dylan Luton, who lives, I think it's eight oh five. They're right next to us and they would be right next to their, they're in between our house on the corner and eight oh nine Spruce. Oh, it's eight oh seven. I'm sorry. He has his address in here. I am the homeowner of eight oh seven Spruce Street. I just learned tonight that the city is discussing tonight the fate of, uh, the house next door to me, eight oh nine Spruce. I request that the city gives sufficient notice such that stakeholders such as myself can res- respond and be present in person. To make our voice heard. As a homeowner in Leadville since twenty twelve and someone committed to the health of the community, I deserve to be heard. Dylan Luton, M.D., EMS Medical Director, St. Vincent Ambulance Service, Emergency Physician, St. Vincent Hospital.
Thank you. She has one more.
The next one is from Elizabeth Esti. Again, the owner of eight oh seven Spruce Street. Dear Level City Council, I live at eight oh seven Spruce Street. I learned minutes ago from the Patties. That the city is considering purchasing eight oh nine Spruce Streets, Spruce as a workforce housing. My husband and I received no notice of this meeting and as very interested stakeholders, we would like to be involved in these plans. I cannot imagine this will not cause major disruptions to parking. As well as human traffic and possible noise concerns. I hope that you will consider holding a meeting at which all stakeholders can be present. Thank you, Elizabeth Esti. So that was at six o'clock tonight that she sent that to me. I was notified at five forty tonight. And we just got here and read through this briefly. Didn't even have enough time to look at everything.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Mayor Jamie Seifer.
Mr. Seifer?
Thank you, Mayor Lobby and members of city council. My name is Jamie Seifer. I live at thirteen hundred Harrison. And I addressed you this evening as a citizen of Leadville. Uh, I just want to say I am fully in support of the city acquiring this property. I think this is an urgent problem which oftentimes requires urgent solutions. And I am very happy and excited to see Administrator Simonson put together such a well-researched and thorough report. And to see everybody turn out on such quick notice. Um, this is one of many tools that we have in the toolbox. And I think that we found a great property at a great time. And again, I just commend you all for your speedy action on such a critical. Need here in our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Seifer. Is there anybody else in the public who would like to speak to city council?
Yeah, we'd like to speak. We're, uh.
One sec, we have someone.
Yeah, we're at eight thirteen Spruce Street, so we're right across the alley from this proposed house purchase. And again, we have the same concerns as far as parking. You could have up to ten vehicles and, and there is no parking. The one-car garage that's been mentioned shares its driveway with us. And it's, the driveway is actually on our property. We've already have significant issues when it was used as a bed and breakfast with that driveway being blocked. And not, you know, you get in and out of our garage. Um, so. I don't exactly understand why this is being rushed so quickly. We don't understand why this is, um. You know, I understand that we want to have affordable housing for everybody, but, you know. I don't think anybody wants to have this right next to their house. On top of that, you're going to have up to five different individuals all sharing kitchens and other common areas. You know, not everyone's going to get along all the time. And so we're going to have significant issues with, you know, fights and other things like that. You know, we're very concerned about the peace and quiet of the neighborhood, the people next door to us who don't know, who, as far as we know, don't know anything about this. They have two small children, you know, they, they probably would like to be able to raise their children in peace and quiet, not with. Ten, up to ten different individuals coming and going. It just seems like it's rather rushed. It seems like it's not very thought. To be honest, it doesn't seem like it's very, very thought out. Again, the, the, most of the rooms that you're talking about are bread and breakfast for a short-term, one or two nights, not for people to live in for long-term. And again, the, the issue of you're going to have several people all sharing these common areas and not everyone's always going to get along. And that's just part of human nature. And so, you know, this is very concerning for those of us who live on the street. And we, we will think that this needs to be thought out a little bit better. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Could I have your name, please? Eight thirteen Spruce?
Yeah, Dave Hopwood, representing Lynn McKinley.
Thank you. I, I also have a gentleman here in council chambers that would like to speak.
My name is Dominic Patti. I also live at eight oh one Spruce Street with Kathy, my wife. I have been a resident. And, uh, occupant on Spruce Street for fifty-five years. My parents lived at eight thirteen Spruce as I grew up there. And I was able to purchase the house. From Asarco, the mining company, as part of my severance program with that company who I worked for, for over twenty-three years. I would like to point out the vision from this city council. We maintain our authentic Leadville identity while improving the quality of life for residents. That is economically, culturally, and envi- and environmentally sustainable. Your mission for you folks, okay? We maintain our authentic Leadville identity, or excuse me. We respect, we are respectful, harmonious, collaborative, and insist on transparent government. That prioritizes opportunities that preserve our history and heritage. This is a, a historic district. The homes on that block are eligible for the historic registry. I'm not sure how that meets your mission. And as far as transparency, I, as my wife did, found out about this at five forty this afternoon. I don't think that's very transparent, and I think you should all consider that. The other issues that need to be addressed, parking. Parking is a nightmare. My wife is disabled. She has one leg. You people don't give any consideration to what it is for a person, a resident. To get access to their own house when bed and breakfast and multi-use is put next door to it. I'm sorry, but that is not reasonable and you need to give consideration to the people that actually live there. Everyone else on the block, and I guarantee you all the neighbors are in, in agreement on this, we'd like to have a voice. And I don't feel that the transparency thus far has given us that voice. I would like to see you table this in, in. Till we have an opportunity to present our side of it and. I understand that housing is an issue in this community. I understand that, believe me. We've been through it. We've talked about it. There's a lot of other opportunities for this council in this community besides a flock house with five people in it on Spruce Street. Go out, find a piece of property, team with a contractor that's local, put people to work. Build housing that, that can last and is sustainable for those people at a reasonable price. It can be done. It's been done elsewhere. Why can't Leadville do it? Thank you. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Patty. Uh, next up, we have Heather Lynn.
Hi, good evening. Thanks. Um. I, I too, uh, you know, obviously. Completely understand where we're at with housing and I know that the city's hurting. I know. Several of my friends that are small business owners can't find employees because of housing. I get it. But I also know of six rentals available right now. The issue isn't. Are there rentals? It's, are they suitable? Um, several of them are too small for our family or they don't accept our dog or. They don't have a big enough yard for us. None of which will be solved with a bed and breakfast room for rent. I just don't understand how a B and B, um, setup. On maybe one of the smallest lots in the entire city of Leadville is suitable for, for this. I think. Everybody's in a very heightened sense of, oh my gosh, what do we do to solve this issue that we're in? Um, and so I think we're grasping at the very first thing. Eight hundred thousand dollars is a lot of money. It's twenty-five percent of your general fund. And it makes me a little bit crazy because there's some lots that we have up on East, or on, yep, on East Eight Street. That are right across the street from a whole block of county-owned land that if purchased for eight hundred thousand dollars. Could go together and create a whole block with a vacated street in the middle and be a huge apartment complex. You know, there's a lot of options out there and we're jumping on a house. Hoping that our employees that are going to want to live there are going to want to live in a room and share a kitchen and share a bathroom. Or I mean, I'm sure a living space and have zero storage, um, and no parking. I just. I have a hard time believing that this is a good use of eight hundred thousand dollars. I, I don't disagree that we have to figure out some things. And that building takes longer than acquiring something initially, but this house. Seems, other than having bathrooms in each of the bedrooms, doesn't make sense to me. If, if the goal of the city council is to buy an existing house with five or more bedrooms. Maybe we won't find another bed and breakfast, but to, to sit here and, and. Purchase, like I said, a, a house on the smallest lot in Leadville with no parking and, and no storage availability for people. This just seems super rushed. I think Leadville City has been accused of not being very transparent in the past, and this is. Not a very good way to spend eight hundred thousand dollars on a super rushed special meeting. The other piece is that I don't see that the conditional use permit is a condition of sale. So we're looking at buying an eight hundred thousand dollar building and assuming. And maybe you can assume since you'll be the applicants that the CUP will go through, but that also seems a little bit difficult for me. So those are all kind of the concerns that I have. Um, like I said, there are some limited rentals available, but some starting at seven fifty a month. There aren't, there are available rentals. It's just usually they don't fit the needs of the people looking for rentals. Thanks.
One more minute.
Thank you, Heather.
Thank you.
Tim Bergman.
Thank you, mayor. Thank you, city council. Um, Tim Bergman, Lake County manager. Just wanted to speak in favor of this, um, as the city moves forward with one tool in our toolbox to address. Affordable, but especially workforce housing in our community. Um, as the city administrator pointed out, we cannot carry out. Civic functions or services to our citizens if we don't have a staff to do that or to house them. So I think this makes sense, um, as city employees being able to live there. You know, whether or not it's permanently or not, or as a place for them to establish themselves in the city before they can find other housing. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. Is there anybody else who has not spoken who would like to speak? Okay, thank you. We, um, is there anybody in city council who has any comments based on what they've heard?
Mayor Christian has it. Councilmember Luna Leal has his hand up.
Uh, go ahead, Christian.
Yeah, um, I think the concerns that were forward today are pretty fair, especially around parking, especially around. Accessibility to house, um, into their own parking. And I think we should definitely take this as seriously as possible. They are. We are representing them and it's only fair to take these concerns, um. As much as we take the concerns of housing, um, being affordable. With that being said, I'm still in favor of this. I do think that it's necessary that we move forward with purchasing and maybe that means we. Handle the situation a bit differently on what it looks like moving forward after purchasing and looking into how do we accommodate these necessary. Needs that are obviously very valid and we should definitely pay attention to them among many other concerns that I've heard before this meeting. Following along with, um, management and all that. I think all of this is stuff that we should seriously look into way before we. Actually make this a, you know, a, a public accessible, people rent there and live there. So I think that's totally fair and valid that there are parking concerns and I think we should look at it. However, I don't think that should stop us from purchasing this. Um, and moving forward with this. And I think it's important that we, um, walk and chew gum, so to say. Um, and we can move forward with this and then handle that parking situation and make sure it's equitable to everyone who already lives there. To make sure they have the proper access that maybe even they didn't have before, when it was a bed and breakfast. I think. These are all things we should definitely look at, and I think these are all things that we are, should all be in agreement with.
And mayor, if I'm, if, if I may, can I address the parking issue for a second?
Yes, please do.
So, uh, we all know that, that parking and especially in the, um, tighter areas of town is an issue. And so what I heard was that the parking was an issue with the bed and breakfast and has been a historic issue. I just want to point out if, if someone buys this and runs a bed and breakfast, you would still have the same parking issues. What the difference is with the city is we're willing to work with you on the parking issue. And I think you remember that I said. That this is within walking distance of city hall. And one of the people who, uh, it, it possibly may use the house, doesn't have a car. And so there are ways to incentivize city employees to not park wherever it is that is causing the problem. And so we want to work with the neighbors. We want to make this work. And I, I think what I hope you'll hear is that. The situation is better than it was when it was run as a bed and breakfast. Hopefully you can come and talk to me and we can figure it out. And work out a solution. The other issue too, I wanted to point out is that the, um. Current owner, uh, is, is applying for a short-term rental license. So you would have people coming in and out of there. Parking regardless of whether it's a city-owned building or if it's a bed and breakfast, or let's say. Anyone else purchased that home, anyone else other than the city could purchase that home. And fill that home with just as many people. So I think the issue is we're willing to work with the neighbors and. We want to essentially alleviate the concerns about the parking. And whatever, whatever it takes, there are definitely creative things that we can do. And whether it's providing incentive to employees or. Having them, you know, park in an adjacent place. There is the adjacent lot. That the, um, neighbors had mentioned has a garage on it. I agree with you. You cannot put a car. that the neighbors had mentioned has a garage on it. I agree with you. You cannot put a car in that garage. But perhaps that is possible to convert into some type of parking that is not on the street.
Thank you, Lori. I, I have some comments as well. Some, some of these, in terms of the public comments, some things were posed in terms of dire worst-case scenarios. First of all, I don't think we really think of this as a long-term solution to anything. We need, we need transitional space, certainly. Everybody does for people who, who need to work here, or, or we need, we need for them to work here, but who need time to find the proper accommodations, whatever those might be. The parking thing is, is certainly an issue, but, but, you know, and I, I appreciate Lori's comments about we'll look for creative solutions for people to, to use less parking on that street whenever that's possible. But, but it's, you know, it's, it's five rooms or five rooms. It's been a, it's been a bed and breakfast. And the next step is a short-term rental, because we know they've applied for a short-term rental license. So I think this is actually a better case scenario than what possibly is about to happen. The other thing is, is people talked about the expediency with which we're moving. And in this marketplace, that's not an option. You can't, you can't wait 30 days to decide whether you're going to buy a property or not because it simply will not be there. So those are, those are my comments. Anybody else in City Council have any thoughts before we move on?
Councilmember Tharp has something to say.
Yes, please, Cisco. You're still muted.
There you go, sorry. Yeah, those are, I had some similar comments as far as the expediency of the process is that we, we have to act that fast to get a place. I certainly take the parking concern seriously. I want to find a good solution for that, and I, I think we can. We, we do need the other options mentioned. We do need to build other housing. We need to do lots of things. But those things won't be available in the next year, or maybe not even in the next two years. And we're at a critical systems failure point. We have firefighters who are leaving our community because they can't afford to live here. I agree this isn't the best option. It's not the dream. If the dream were available to us, we wouldn't call this a housing crisis. When we are in a crisis, we have to do things that are the best option available. I think if our firefighters start to leave, if we can't hire hospital personnel, if we can't hire teachers, our community is going to struggle more than, than it is now. And, and, you know, I lament that, I lament that that's the case, but here we are. So I think we need to do something about it.
Thank you.
Mayor, are you addressing? Hang on just a second. Do I need to read the comments, Mayor? Are you addressing the comments? A short-term rental license?
Yeah, one comment is not correct. The other I answered.
There was a question, why would the seller be applying for a short-term rental license if the short-term rental is not transferable? And then someone else asked, it says, the house has been on the market for months. This is just a rush to say they are doing something. I'm just reading the comments for the record.
Thank, thank you very much.
And I also have a, a member of the public that would like to comment again off of something that was said, and I don't know whether that's allowed.
No, I, I think, I think we're done.
One second, Mayor. We can't hear you.
Can you, can you hear me now?
But we've been hearing him the whole time.
Go ahead, Mayor.
Christian, can you hear me?
One second, Mayor. We can hear you now, Mayor.
You can hear me now, okay?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. At this time, we have kind of exhausted public comment. We've had people who've talked to us. We appreciate that. So at this time, City Council is, has a couple of possibilities. We could continue this matter. We could have a motion to adopt the resolution. Or we could, we could have a motion to, to not adopt the resolution. But I would, if there's no more conversation, I would entertain a motion of one of those three possibilities.
Councilmember Luna Leal moves to adopt or to approve Resolution Number 12, Series of 2022, a resolution authorizing the purchase of real estate property known as 809 Spruce Street.
Three seconds.
Is there any other discussion from City Council?
Yes, one more comment. I, I think it is important to note that it's obviously not a fair situation. But quite frankly, neither is the housing situation, and and I've had to deal with plenty of situations where housing is inequitable. And I think it's the best thing that we can do to our community, regardless of homeowners or not. They, there are many people in our community who are members of the community who deserve proper housing. And I do think there are concerns that we should take very seriously, and I think that we should move to address those before we even start having this be a more actual rental unit. But I do think that it's time that we start moving on this. And unfortunately, that comes with some sacrifices and sometimes sweat. And I mean, to be quite frank, I think this is long overdue. I think this is things that we should have done way before, and I wish this is something that we would have acted on to begin with. Unfortunately, that's not what happened. We didn't seize the moment when it was more possible to create and establish affordable housing, and we're in a situation now, and I think this is, in my opinion, the best option that we do have to continue going forward with. So I, my position's pretty firm on this, and I think that we should be equitable to everyone in our community.
Thank you.
There is a question. There is a question on the, on the chat that is there a reason the CUP isn't a condition of the contract?
There's not, but this is, this is zone R2. So I, I'm not, you know, I don't have the, the code book in front of me, but I don't believe a CUP is necessary.
And we can have our city attorney, Christiana McCormick, address that point if you'd like, Mayor.
Christiana, you, you have a comment on that?
Sure. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay, so the CUP would normally be a condition of the purchase agreement. The CUP is something that is required by the municipal code in order to use this house as the city is proposing to use it. So the city will have to go through the CUP process, whether the CUP is a condition of the purchase contract or not.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other discussion from City Council?
Should we consider putting the, the CUP as a condition in the contract? What, what is the impact of that?
I just don't know that it's, sorry, this is Christiana, Mayor, if it, if it's okay, I can respond.
Please, go ahead.
Okay. Um, I, I just, it's, I, I honestly don't know that there would be a point, Councilmember Tharp. It would be a little, it would just be redundant. And if the contract is ready to go and be signed by both parties, once council authorizes it, then, I mean, we can just get it done. And it would be, like I said, it would just be redundant, and I don't think it's necessary.
There was a comment that said protecting the city to purchase only if the CUP is awarded. Basically, you know, saying that they can only purchase the property if the CUP is awarded.
Christiana, do you have a thought on that?
Um, I guess I'm not sure. I'm not sure exactly what that is saying.
That was Sarah Madsen's con, comment.
I'm sorry. I think the intention is just to protect the city to purchase only if a CUP is awarded so that it can be used in the way you intended. And then otherwise, you would back out of the purchase.
And if I can, and Christiana, jump in if, if we're getting ahead of ourselves, but we would potentially need to alter the dates in the contract then in order to make that happen. It's my understanding that that would require a presentation that would take longer than 30 days. Is that correct?
Yeah, a, a CUP has to go before the Planning Commission for a recommendation, then it has to go before City Council.
And what are the noticing requirements for a CUP?
I believe, I don't have that right in front of me, Mayor.
I think it's 15 days, Christiana.
Yeah, thank you, Lori. Yeah.
Okay. I, I find that a practical approach to this contract. What does everybody else think?
I'm sorry. I don't quite understand what the practical approach, what you mean by practical.
That the contract would be contingent upon the approval of conditional use permit for the changed use of this property.
And, and Mayor, I think that we would need to, this is Lori, I think we would need to then, right now, if you see the contract, it has a closing date of May 16th. I think we would, and it may, I don't know if it would change the seller's willingness to accept an offer. But I think we would then need to change the closing date significantly. I think we would need to look at a calendar and figure out when the next meetings are and figure out when we would get it before the Planning Commission publicly noticed, and then before the City Council publicly noticed. So just logistically, I think it would mean, I'm asking Lori Ty, potentially, if we're looking at the noticing for the meetings, are we looking at additional 30 days, or do you?
It's usually about four to six weeks process. Considering the planning and zoning.
That's, that's a calculation that'll have to be made on, on the next planning and zoning meeting, then the notice, then the City Council meeting for this, for the CUP. So I don't, I don't know what that calculation is right now, but I, I'm, I'm falling on the side of having, having that contingency.
The only thing I just wanted to flag, though, is that that may, right now, the way the purchase contract is written, or it is, that was the seller's acceptance, or their, their, their terms that we thought were acceptable. So just to throw that out there, that if we ask for a 40-to-five day close or a 60-day close, that may change their thinking. That, I don't know. I can try and find out, but I, I don't know.
I, I'd like to hear from City Council on this matter. What does everybody else think? All right, Tracy, you're, you're, Tracy first.
I guess I don't understand why City Council would approve purchase of something and then deny themselves a CUP.
No, it's, it's, it's a great point. I get it, but I think it's a, it's a process issue in terms of the public. Dana, thoughts?
Yeah, my thought is, is that at least historically, I think we have a good history of checking ourselves and keeping ourselves aligned with our code, and I I mean, if, if it's a process issue for the public, that's a different goal than saying we should purchase this place and then adapt our plan to fit our code as dictated through the CUP process.
Thank you. Cisco?
I do, I like that, building that in to the CUP. I, I like that condition, but I also think that in this competitive of a real estate market, I worry that that, that our offer might not be accepted. Have to think a little bit more about it at the moment.
Okay, thank you. Christian, your thoughts?
Um, I mean, it makes sense. Obviously, it's a process that everyone has to go to, and it should be fair. However, I think given the track record, given the situation, obviously, it's a bit awkward and weird. But I'm sure if there is something in code violation, we would address it before moving forward with making it rental, and I think it's the best option is to buy it, even if that means that we don't necessarily rent it out immediately, but have to act on it to be in appliance with what we want to use it for. I think those changes can be made after the purchase rather than having to wait to potentially purchase it again. So I think moving forward with a purchase is a smart thing to do, and making any changes that we may have to make to be accordance to any codes that we have could be done.
I think that's very well thought out. Thank you. I, I think you just changed my mind, but nonetheless, you know, I think Christian's right. The conditional use prom, permit is, is just that. It, it, it usually, it's about conditions and what conditions might be applicable to that use. And I think that's a process we will go through. So the question right now is, we do have a motion on the table. We, we do not have a second. So the question will be, oh, you did. Okay, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Dana. But we have a motion and a second. So there, there are only two options. One is that we vote both the motion down and then reconsider, or that we go forward with, with the approval of the motion of, of the resolution, and we, we go ahead with the purchase based on the current contract. And then we go through the CUP process as part of a public process after the fact. Is there any other discussion?
Excuse, excuse me, Mayor, I do have one other question.
Yeah.
If we purchased this property and did not get a CUP for the intended purpose, could we rent the five rooms out long, as long-term rentals? Would, would that still require, they wouldn't be designated, this might be a question for Christiana. What's the difference between what we're trying to do and what just renting a home, renting rooms in a home would be?
Um, it would depend on the details of that use. If, like, right now, as the use is proposed, it meets the definition of rooming and boarding house under your code. And so if that use were to change, and it would meet it, and if it met a different definition, then different rules could apply. But it just depends on what the use is, how it's being used, and the details of it.
Cisco asked a great question. If they're long-term rentals, then, then we, long-term rentals are not regulated in the city. Okay, well, at this time, there is a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion at this point? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Loretson.
Yes.
Councilmember Luna Leo.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Green.
Yes.
Councilmember Tharp.
No.
Mayor Lobby.
Yes. The vote was four to one on the five City Council members present. Uh, the vote was four to one on the five city council members, uh, present, um, with, uh, Councilmember Tharp, uh, voting no. Uh, the motion passed. Anything else anybody would like to say before we adjourn? Uh, thank you, it is 7:58, this city council special meeting of, of April, the, the 12th, 2022 is adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.